Do I hear motion to adopt the agenda?
So move. I think we can keep it crossed out, I'm sorry. Maybe with the deletion of one of the items.
Lake County Chamber roundup parade? Not second?
Second.
I'll be in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you hear motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Aye. All right, that's a move.
I'll second.
Okay, do we favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll move on down to the guest speaker's communications information line. We have a letter here from Dee Benson. Asking about if the town possibly had some property that put in a community garden. Which I think would be great if we had some place to put one, providing somebody wouldn't go out there and tear it up. But...
Just calling for a orchard and the likes. I think it's a good idea, but I would just make comment that we have no agricultural reason for property in our community.
I wouldn't know where to put one near.
There was one a few years ago down by the hospital.
I think it was on the hospital property.
It was on the hospital property, but it kind of...
We don't have any agricultural...
Got phased out because not enough people continue working it, so. But it is a good idea, society market can use it.
Can you have your Lakeview Garden City bulletin? And... That was on the... You know, the papers we have to fill out, send back?
No, that's on later, on new business.
Yeah. And, um... Also, I will be leaving in the morning for reports to the mayor's convention. Next on the item is the public comment period. Will you state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes if you have any?
I have a comment I'd like to make.
I did.
And it's inappropriate to stop me and instruct me on how else I may talk to the group of councilors. On the whole, I don't know what we can under a public meeting law, so you'll have to excuse me. Due to continued comments from credible sources that I keep hearing from regarding my application for the position of chief of police, I would like to clarify several points for this body. I applied for the chief's position and was granted an interview. Although I and others had some concerns about the process, the certainly more qualified candidate, Bill Will Behan, was selected as chief. However, at no time did I withdraw my name from consideration for the position. The Saturday following his selection, I had an approximately three-hour-long meeting with Chief Behan. Based on my 13 years of law enforcement management experience in this community, I explained some of the recent history of the police department and expressed some concerns about personnel and operations. Many of those concerns have indeed come to fruition. At the conclusion of our conversation, I believe I might be considered as a supervisor in the police department. On Friday, March 30th, I received a letter from Ms. VanderWaal stating that my interaction with Chief Behan had been negative and that I was no longer being considered for a position with the department. I contacted Ms. VanderWaal by telephone and requested a meeting to discuss the letter. She agreed to meet sometime after Chief Behan began working. After additional consideration of the contents of Ms. VanderWaal's letter, I sent her the following email message on April 1st. I've been thinking about the letter I received from you and the conversations I had with both you and Will. After I met with Will, I was feeling fairly positive about things. Granted, some of the information I shared with him was not necessarily positive, but far from being a negative conversation, I hoped he would take my comments as they were intended, a realistic and honest statement of what I believed he would be facing coming into this community. Clearly, he did not share my optimism after our meeting. I think you can appreciate that I'm at a time in my life, if I'm going to return to a career of working nights and weekends, I want to do so in a job where I am excited to be at work every single day, not wondering if my boss is happy with me or believes I have his best interest in mind. I believe that I may have pushed my way into a meeting with you and Will after April 9. I do not want to take time from either of your schedules to have a meeting that is conducted only out of politeness. Will needs to have a person working for him that he has 100% confidence in. While I feel that I can be that person and support and move forward his plans for the agency, if he does not believe I am that person, there is not much reason for us to have further conversations. Since that time, I've had no further communication with Ms. VanderWaal. While my 27 years of experience as a law enforcement officer and supervisor and the considerable research I have conducted on contracts for police services have convinced me that the best way to provide the most effective, efficient, and economical delivery of law enforcement services to the citizens of the town of Lakeview is to contract with the sheriff's department. If I had been honored to serve as the chief of police, I would have worked tirelessly to make this department successful. I have a much longer history of public service to this community than several in this room, one that I hope to possibly continue at some time in the future. I would be grateful if individuals associated with the town government would cease untruthful comments about my application, interview, and subsequent interactions with Chief Behan and other town officials. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else?
Well, following that up, it's really funny, you mentioned that my husband applied for a town manager position about three years ago after I complained about the water here. Funny thing is, is he actually came home and said, "Hey, I applied for this job," and I said, "No, no, 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 you did not. You're not taking that job, even if you got an interview, no. It would be a huge pay cut." However, Marley Turner has been sending emails out saying that I have a personal vendetta against the town because of that. However, I did not support my husband.
I read her emails.
Yeah, yeah, she's so... which is private information, I hate to tell you, but... So anyways, it's kind of funny. I'm just speaking, please. And I've been a huge supporter of Ray. I voted for Ray, I've been a huge supporter in our group of people who are against the water. However, I was really shocked to find out that somebody was saying false things about my husband, who's good family friends with them. So, that being said, I thought that was interesting. My other thing that I wanted to discuss is the public safety fee that was presented. You guys presented the public safety fee in need of hiring a fifth police officer. However, you had already approved the budget with the funding for a fifth police officer. Obviously, you all know I discovered that and made it very public that that public safety fee is not needed for that fifth police officer. In doing so, I've done some more research about having the county merge with our local PD. And I want to give to you, this is a U of O study, I'm a Beaver fan, so I'm not a huge fan of U of O, but that study is a great study about the feasibility of the sheriff's department taking over our police department. Our police department, with the funding you guys have approved for next year, if they work out the $32,000 contract negotiations to all of their benefit, will still only make $45,000 a year as a, just a local PD, I don't know what you're gonna call him here. Deputy, I guess. And that is still significantly lower than our sheriff's office and for the county as well, I mean, the state average. In doing a sheriff-only patrol and absorbing our current PD into the sheriff's department, they would make on average about $5,000 or more per year, which would be not only beneficial to our local PD, but also would be beneficial to our town and our finances for the local community. So, I just want to make you guys very aware, I'm gonna push the issue, big time. I'm doing a lot of research, I'm willing to sit on any committees, boards, whatever. I will be going to the commissioners next week and discussing that option. I know we have our local sheriff's department here, and from my understanding, they are in support of possibly merging and opening discussions. It's been said they were not, that's not true. So, that is one of the big things that might concern with the public safety fee. It needs to be completely separate from the water issue. You guys all heard that last week. My only other thing is, in my research, not one town in Lake, in Oregon, has a meeting at 4:00 PM for their town hall. Nissah, 6:30, I believe, I have a whole list. I can go on and on, but every single community, Happy Valley, 6:00 PM, Troutdale, 7:00 PM, Jervis, 7:00 PM, Golden Beach, Third or Gold Beach, 6:30, Nissah, 7, Mount Angel, 7, Baker City, 7, Lebanon, 6:00 PM, Sisters, 6:30. Not one community in our town, in our state, has a meeting at 4 o'clock where it's inaccessible to the public, who is the majority of working people. So, I'm going to ask you guys to move your meetings to 7:00 PM or 6:00 PM, somewhere in that range, where the majority of the community can actually attend. Not just one meeting, but all of your meetings. And that's it.
Do you want to comment?
Thank you for your comments.
I just have one thing to say real quick. Just on naming a public safety fee is actually a public safety tax, and it should be acknowledged as such and followed through as such and following through with the ballot on the November issue. The deadline is still out there, it can be made. I just wanted to redress that fact, it's a tax, not a runaway fee. There's been several precedents already mentioned, I already mentioned this last meeting, I'm not gonna reiterate everything I just said from the previous meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got some questions for Jeff, if I may.
Pardon?
I have some questions for Jeff, if I may.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, my questions, about the flushing going on. Okay, do you flush just one at a time, one hydrant at a time, typically speaking, how many hydrants?
We try to have three going, three, start one, go down, start another one. Start closest to the tank, starts the flow, gets any residue that's in the tank, and then move farther away from it.
So, it's east to west is the flush, basically?
Yeah, and then north and...
And how long are they running for?
Till they clear up, it varies.
Give me a vote.
Average, 10 to 12 minutes.
10 to 12 minutes.
Some of them went for a couple of hours.
Really? And are you starting down at the south end, 9th Street hydrant first, or is that...
No, we're starting right up here at this tank.
And am I correct in saying that the water comes in 2 million gallon first, and then it goes into the 1 million gallon?
No, it goes into the 1 million gallon only, the 1,750 only. And that's just an additional reservoir, so that's actually fed off the distribution system.
Do you guys keep records of how, the duration of flush times and for each hydrant that it gets flushed in what time specifically?
Yeah, we do.
I would like to copy that log, as far back as maybe two years, possibly. Is there a log, do you... Is there a log on how often the 1 and 2 million gallon tanks, basically the holding tanks, get cleaned?
There's not a log of it. It used to get done every other year, and now it's getting done every year.
So, the state of Oregon doesn't require you to keep a log?
They would like the tanks cleaned at least every five years.
Okay, so, the state of Oregon does not require you to keep a log on when it is cleaned and it's certified clean and by what company and what contractor is hired to go ahead and do that?
I guess our work order would be a, would be a log, you could check it, you know, and see how often it's been cleaned, but...
Do you know the last time it was cleaned? The date specifically?
Off the top of my head, no.
How many years ago?
They've all been cleaned in the last year.
Okay, I would definitely like work orders of logs back to at least three, maybe five years, possibly. I just want to see the last few times it was cleaned and by who.
Okay.
You guys do hire out?
No, we hire ourselves.
You claim, so do you two... is there anybody on your team that's a certified diver?
We don't do it with the water in, we drain the tanks and clean it out with a fire hose.
So, never once before has this town had a diver, what, dive to clean it?
A 100,000 gallon tank out of Goldmore Terrace gets cleaned by divers, because you can't lose positive pressure out there.
Okay.
And it gets cleaned every five years, and it was just done a year ago.
Okay.
By certified divers.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see those records, I'd like to see them.
Sure.
Excellent. I'll give it afterwards, offline.
Okay. All right, I'll move on. Going to old business, we want a transparent, lodging, tax advisory committee. Have we had any applications for that test plan? Just one.
So, I don't want to take it off the old business until we have a board meeting, so...
How many do we need on that committee?
Five.
Five? Do we need four more? Okay. All right, move on down to discussion of the public safety fee. I adopted the word of the day. And my thinking on this public safety fee right now, with some new things that's come up on the water, that we just not even worry about the public safety fee at this time, because on the water system, we've got with a net from the governor's office today, there is a possibility that we can get grant or loan, whatever, but we have to raise our water fees in order to do that. He says our water rates are too low. And they basically will tell us what we have to raise them to. So, I would like mainly, we're mostly on the water system, and let's see what we can do about getting a filter system in here, because we talked with Larry Holzey from Business Oregon, and if they're willing to come in and help. I got a message from Daryl Anderson that the water filter system we're looking at is probably anywhere between $4 and $6 million. So, it's a, whatever, you know, do you guys want to go ahead and look at the public safety fee or what? But that was just my, I think.
Once again, I think, Mayor, you are misleading the public in trying to tie the two together. There is no tiebreaker between a water...
I know, I didn't know we need...
Or anything, and so why did you even start out that way? We're on the topic, you have one item, there are discussion of public safety fee.
Okay.
You went into water.
I did.
It has nothing to do with water.
This is what I'm trying to tell you.
On what?
Is, let's forget about that and work mostly on the water.
How is that gonna help our law enforcement?
Well, I don't know the best way to help them right now, you know, except put out a...
Well, I think there were some ideas that were thrown out at the meeting we had the other night, and I think maybe we should address those and not...
Okay, but let's go with it. And so, let's form a committee?
I don't know, I'm just saying, there were ideas thrown out, but to, for the sake of a water system, you're throwing away law enforcement, that makes no sense whatsoever.
I'm not throwing it away, I'm just saying a whole...
That's what you're doing, you're... They're not the same.
Okay.
You're just like confusing it in the publication that did it. I don't get that. So, public safety fee, that's what we're on. Forget the water, the water's a different thing. It's the next item, isn't it? The next item, okay, let's discuss the public safety fee.
Where do you want to go on the public safety fee? How do you want to do it? Do you want to form a committee and have a meeting later? Because if we do put it out, to vote on the public, it has to be in before the 8th of August in order to get it on the ballot.
Well, I think that the safety fee was designed to help us in a time now. And I was supportive of the safety fee. We heard that there are many in our community who are not, I heard those voices, they spoke out.
Right.
So, I do have, you know, I guess, questions in my mind that that may not be the right route to go. But I also heard some people over here that had some good ideas they threw out, and perhaps we should at least look at those, and maybe a committee is needed. You know, a committee to come in and dissect our budget. When the council went through budget hearings with our budget committee, I don't think that that's the need that we need. But if they can come up with ideas that will help us in our law enforcement endeavors in our community, I would welcome anyone from the community to do so. But to, you know, to lambaste us for our budgeting, I think that's ludicrous. I wouldn't invite them to do that, but if they want to tear the budget apart, that's fine. Go right ahead and tear the budget apart and tell us how you would make other agents meet in our community. There's a lot of needs that Lakeview has, and I think that we all need to work together. I heard some very good discussions that took place in our meeting, we had good attendance, and maybe a committee is needed, just so that they can kick it around and then come back to us with the recommendation, if they so desire, if they may decide to get in no matter what, there's nothing we can't do.
We have a sign-up sheet, and the people signed up to vote in?
And there were several, I think they signed up, so...
There was eight on there, to be exact.
Eight, well, that's a, that's a good-sized committee, that's for Lakeview, Oregon. But I, okay, and I got off on that, because I think that right now is the time that we need the public safety fee, and it was gonna be for us for a while, we've discussed other things that were on the horizon as far as monies for our community that we could look towards and perhaps do away with the public safety fee when there's not a need, as we do in our snow removal fee. When we get to a certain point and there's excess, we cut it off, we don't do that anymore. And I don't think the community members would expect us to do any different in regards to a public safety fee. But I think to delay, if in fact we can get it as a levy, you know, the community cried that, we want it on the ballot. If they don't put it on the ballot, then we may have to come back with a public safety fee, so what? You know, there are needs in our community that we have to meet, and so let that be answered.
What is next Monday?
I think Tuesday's the 21st, Monday, I'm just kidding, the 30th. No, I'm not positive.
I mean, otherwise, it's gonna be, we'll either have to call a special election, which will cost the community an awful lot of money, or we can wait two years until the next general election. That's a long ways off for law enforcement.
So, why don't we hold a meeting next Monday?
I'm getting, whatever.
And all those that sign, come in, and we'll sit down and work up the best way to ballot.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to confuse, I think that's a council decision to call a levy, if, I mean, there were certain things that were thrown out, and they said, "Call a levy, a tax levy." And you have someone back who wants to enter into comments, I don't know.
I don't know if this is appropriate.
Well, I would say that we should, I guess personally, I've been in favor of a levy all along, which I discussed with council members, but, and if we're going to do that, I think we should at least start on that. And if, if the public votes it down, then it is not, no longer an issue.
Can you guys clarify what the immediate need is and the timeframe for this immediate need, so that the public knows what exactly it is?
Well, the timeframe is just because if we're going to put a levy on the ballot for this November...
I mean, our immediate need, our need is five more officers, we need to do that in two months. Because my understanding is you have the budget approved from July 1st to June 31st of next year, with five officers.
But, you know, the thing is, if it's voted in in November, it would not be collected until next year, so we wouldn't get the money until...
No, I understand, I'm asking, what is our need police-wise? What is it you guys are really trying to do with the public safety fee? Like specifically, hire...
Eventually, we, you know, as you're aware, we have vacancies, but eventually, we would like to have the fifth officer. Now, that may not happen the minute this levy passes, but we are hoping to do it in the future when the funds are built.
May I offer a comment on your budget? There's very few cities and towns in eastern Oregon that are comparable to Lakeview, there's only three. Enterprise, John Day, and Burns. Your approved budget for this next fiscal cycle is extremely generous in compared to any of those other cities. The difference is, is the level of service that they provide. As, as most people know, you generally provide two police officers per thousand population. Lakeview's current population is 2,300 people, that's 4.6. It just depends on what you want for your level of service. Your budget far exceeds everybody else in eastern Oregon, with the exception of Nissah, which is Ms. VanderWaal knows is a considerably larger department than the one here, by two to three officers, I believe, if I remember Chief Al's budget properly. But I spent a considerable time going over budgets, because that was an area that I didn't know a lot about. But if you're, I think it's 602 or 605, I'm sorry?
605.
605, that is extremely generous for a community of this size. And if properly constructed and with adequate salary ranges, and I'm just using discussions with Under Sheriff Havel, is for what they pay, their top step deputy pay, what they average, you can almost get six full-time officers out of that, not five. With overhead, with overhead that's run by, you know, by an adequate staff, if you're just hiring patrol officers, you can get six out of that. And I'm telling you from scheduling, with six officers, you can schedule almost 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week coverage. I've done it before, I've worked, the second agency I worked for, we did exactly that. We had a chief and six, and we worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it can be done. If that's the level of service you want, it far exceeds the nationwide average for a community of this size.
Well, Steve, I can't argue with your figures, because I'm sure you're probably right, but this is what we have heard from the community for the past several years, that we need 24-hour coverage.
And I agree with you, I think it would be a wonderful thing to do.
So, that's why we're trying to do it.
And I think, and I think with the appropriate way of going about it, you probably, you know, again, it's gonna require some cooperation, but I think you can get there with your budget. I think getting rid of some of your overhead costs and your overhead management is a good way to do that. And, and I, and if I may, unlike some people, I don't think you need to throw out the baby with the bathwater as far as a contracting arrangement goes, I think that's a horrible decision. I do not think the town should give up input into what the services they're providing. That's why I'm sure, it's no secret, you probably, some of you are on Facebook, and I've really promoted a Happy Valley model, because the town, I've got, I'll be happy to share that contract with any of you. It is excellent. Mr. Campbell and I have had some considerable conversations, he's their public safety director. He thinks Troutdale and Wilsonville and all those places give away far too much to the sheriff. They have tremendous input in the services that are provided, the coverage that they receive. It's, you know, how statistics and other things are reported to the town council. It's a constant and two-way interaction all the time. But where they save money is economies of scale. Anybody who shops at Safeway and Costco understands that. The more you buy, if you're buying uniforms for 12 or 15 people, your supplier's gonna give you a far better rate than when you're buying for two. If you don't have all the overhead costs and the duplicative costs, you save money, and you can put that money into people that will work in the street. And that's just the simple fact. There's, unlike some people in the administration like Mr. Spicer that want to say, "Well, we can differ about the facts." Well, you can't differ about the facts, you may can differ about the interpretation of them. But you can save money and you can have input and you can have guidance for those services. I don't advocate at all throwing out the baby with the bathwater here, at all. Those who say, "Just give the money to the sheriff and move ahead," I say, "Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh." That's a terrible idea, that's a terrible idea. This community, the sheriff might throw something at me here just a minute, but this community has a long and proud history of local law enforcement services, and that needs to be maintained. But it needs to be maintained more economically, in a more economically viable way for this community. We all hope Red Rock opens up, they had their groundbreaking, we hope they come, we hope they bring people. There's no guarantee of income for this community right now, other than what we have. We hope it comes, I for one really do. As a firefighter, it scares me to death, but I hope it comes, because we need, we need the shot in the arm. I hope other industry comes, we need the shot in the arm. But the simple fact is, in my 13 years here, the population of this community is dropped by 250 residents. And unless somebody's got a better crystal ball than me, I don't see that changing.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm extremely quiet on this prior to the first meeting we had. The first meeting we had was when we kind of brought up the fact that we didn't talk about this one, and it was too early for me to vote anyway on this, that we need to have more numbers out there. Ms. Taylor has pointed out that, you know, the fact that we did adopt a budget that doesn't include this fee as adopted. So, there was room at least to, you know, this fiscal year in, you know, June 30th of 19, that doesn't include this fee and provides for six officers, a chief and five, well, lieutenant, and then also four patrolmen. So, you know, the other night when we had our meeting about this fee, you know, I took a few different notes, and, you know, I think that, you know, we've got our sheriff's department here, and Steve's here, appreciate his comments, and I truly think we do need to talk more about, you know, working with the sheriff's department on a plan, if we want to go that route. We are down to two officers that are currently, you know, working and one on the mainstream, so we've got a real situation on our hands that doesn't have a whole lot of positive power. And it's been that way for, you know, a couple of years, really. I mean, when we talked about, we've had a vacancy in there for a long time. we've had a vacancy in there for a long time, and the chief position, it's had a lot of turnover. That's really difficult for me to, to accept, and really hard to know exactly the solution, but I think we need to exhaust all opportunities. And I think that if we do so, we might, we might be able to come to a table as a council, maybe there's support, and then be able to, you know, come to a solution. And it may not be what a lot of people are calling for and asking for, but at least we'd be able to justify the reasons why we want to stay with, you know, StatsQ, which StatsQ really has had a lot of savings in the last few years, probably, from being shorthanded, or at least it would appear that way, although the budget still is, you know, taking to provide that, six positions is still taken from other areas, and that, and that can be a potential problem moving forward. And that's why I think the fee still needs to be addressed, if we're going to stick with what we perceive to be still the public's cry for six officer and full-time 24-hour coverage. I, I'm not still convinced that that was ever really something we had to have, although I know a lot of work went into it, and that's why we're, where we're at today. You know, there, there's been a lot of discussion as to why this fee is being the path that we have taken. A lot of communities, smaller communities of our size have taken this, this route, and, and the numbers are around 50 to 60%, is what I heard at the last meeting. That, that still doesn't make it right, is all I would have to say about that. And, and, and I'm not downplaying the work that's been done. I think that, you know, what was presented was, and, and truly the way that the town did put it on the ballot, they did, you know, ask for a survey, things were done. And I know a lot of people were frustrated with the communication, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. You know, there, there are many things that I've called for, especially the website, get some work done on that. You know, we, we need to put information out there for the public. You know, I'm the department head of the county, and I put information on there and making copies available, some simple things for people to do, but, you know, we need to be transparent and give that communication early to the community as, as they need. Now, this council also needs to share information amongst ourselves and plans and debates is shared with Happy Valley. I think that we ought to, you know, consider some of these things. You know, we, we get public information or comments often in letter form, you know, if that was submitted, I think we should all spend the time to look at it, put it in the council pack, and just say, "Hey, it doesn't mean it's the way we're going, but it's something we should all consider on a, on a broad scale, so that, you know, we can all say that we reviewed it, and if we need to have a further discussion, even potentially an executive session, where, where, you know, there are liabilities that we need to consider by continuing to under, understaff the way we are, and the amount of extra work that's put in on our sheriff's department and our state police, that's, that's a concern to me. I mean, we've got mutual aid agreements, but, you know, it's something that we can't rely on, on these O G agencies to continue to provide the, the service that, that they are at the same level of pay that they're given. I mean, they're, they're increasing their workload, certainly because of the extra calls that they have to respond to. Some of my other notes from the other meeting are towards water, so I don't know, but, uh, we will get into that next. But I, I would, at this time, I would, you know, I think, I, I appreciate the fact that people are volunteering to serve on a community and to, to discuss this further. Our time period is very short to try to get on the ballot, and it's, and it's been explained for a few different reasons why there should be a tax, a true tax and not just a fee. You know, it's deductible, for one. Many of the families could use that deduction instead of just continuing to send that money out with no chance for reimbursement on any scale. I, for one, have always been against this fee. I don't, and I will state that I'm for police. I think that they ought to be paid relative to what other officers are paying in jurisdictions of our size. However, I, I do recognize the fact that they're forced into a position that they take. That everybody has a, a certain level of pressure that comes with certain jobs, you know, certainly as, as public law enforcement, that, that has come under fire a lot in the last few years, on a national scale, but on a local scale. We should be supporting our officers. I, I think everyone in our rural community would say that they're supportive of our officers. Again, if we can pay them, you know, what, what they're worth, then I think that that's helps to keep them here. It helps to keep them happy in the jobs that they do. However, you know, all of us realize that we live in the rural area, and we're going to probably not be getting paid what we're worth. Certainly, I could, I could leave and go take another job, or find a job somewhere else, and we make it considerably more money. And, but we live here for a reason, and I hope that stays, and it's for, for the reasons we, we've all stated, and many people gave, you know, very heartfelt comments towards that recently. So I, I will say that, that although I'm supportive of our officers getting more, I think that the solution is not a fee. If we want to hurry and set that committee up and get it on the ballot, let the voters have their way with it, I, I'm still not supportive of it. I think there's a better solution. And I think if we, we have that same committee, or the rest of us kind of research some of the information that we've heard, and, and it's shared with, with the group, then I think we're going to get to a solution that, that's beneficial for all. I mean, we, we represent the community, and we're supposed to make sure that, that we have your best interests at heart, but that's for one, you know, good health, you know, healthy community, that, that comes in lots of different, different jobs that we have to do, help, help get jobs here. You know, when, when we talk about the Red Rock potential coming, I, I believe wholeheartedly it's going to be here, and it'll be here really soon before we all realize it. And that, you know, there's a lot that are, that are still, you know, saying, "Hold on, it may not come." But to have, have the groundbreaking, have, you know, the monies, the bonds already sold, you know, they're full speed ahead on, on so many levels, and there's a whole lot of money that's going to be coming through the service development fee that, that we need to figure out, and there ought to be a committee informed to figure out where we're spending that money. You know, the annexations, and annexations that should have happened, in my opinion, in this last go-around, that we didn't address. If we keep working to get those people annexed, then, then that revenue will also generate this opportunity to fund the needed revenue to support the police fire in 911.
I'll be short. My name's Tracy McLean. I live down in the South End on South 9th Street. I'm a volunteer with Lake County Search and Rescue and the Disaster Unit. There are places in this town with meth overdoses, assaults, that we are called to as volunteers. We get out of bed, we go to in the middle of the night. There are some that we won't go until these guys are there. So if you live next door to that person, and they're kicking in your door because they're pissed off, we can't do a thing about it until law gets there. The L E Os in this town are so important to the disaster unit. And then, on the other hand, we are frontier medicine. We have, by law, 24 hours to respond to a call. We don't have to jump out of bed. We can go there in the morning. That's the fact of it. We get up and go, and we pray, and we're on the radio asking, "Is there law enforcement on scene?" Because you get a methamphetamine overdose, that person's ready to fight. And when they get to the hospital, they're still ready to fight. You get an assault, you've got a guy there with a knife sticking out of his leg. You're hoping that a cop's going to be there so he doesn't pull it out and stick it in you, and you don't get home to your family for going out and volunteering for your community. We get an appreciation dinner at the end of the year. That's what we get. If we ever fold up as, as a disaster unit, it's going to cost 20 grand a month to this community for a contractor to come out of Portland to provide ambulance service here.
If not more?
Or more. It could be a week by the time it happens. Depends on what they send, what, what level, if it's basic life support, advanced, what they send. Law enforcement is more than just catching bad guys in this town. More than writing DUIs, stopping speakers, and if it's not taken care of, you're not going to see very many of us people with our orange vests willing to go into the South End of town, or out to the west side of town, to the Fairview Annex, and want to take a chance on either getting our butts kicked, an attitude in a sack, or one of us ended up beating the patient instead of the person we go after. And that's the honest fact of it all. If we don't have good law enforcement and dependable law enforcement in this town, you're not going to see us out in the middle of the dark picking up people very often. That's just how it works.
If I may share one, I don't know if any of you read the Oregonian. I kind of sit in the library all day long, so I have time to look at things. But they've been running a series about demographics in the counties in the state. And this, of course, is at county level, but you can probably extrapolate it to the city as well. Does anybody have any idea what the, we're talking, for those who don't do statistics, there's a mean or an average, which people that are the real high end or the real low end really skew that. But these are median numbers. So if you put everybody in a line, one top to bottom, and put a line right through the middle, this is half the county. Half the county above this line, and half the county below this line. The median age for Lake County is almost 50 years old. The median income for Lake County is $20,000. So what does that tell you? You've got a lot of older people on fixed incomes, and you've got a lot of younger people that are making a minimum wage. There's not a lot of high age, wait, a lot of high wage earners here. And so, Mayor Turner, your concern about tapping on people that don't have a lot of money, I think that factors into it. So efficiency, economy, and how to do things more effectively is your key.
Well, I just want to respond blunt to Terry on, on some of your caller's that you talked about, south of town, and annexed out to U V streets. All those aren't in the town limits either, and, and that's why we talked about annexation two years ago, and we talked about trying to make sure we get those. We already signed the letter of irrevocable consent to annex, so that we actually would get the general fund revenue up because of those taxes that, you know, are able to be claimed. And, and so, you know, obviously taxation, you know, but they're getting the service that we're trying to provide in urban growth boundaries, and, and mutual aid with, you know, our sheriff's department. But they'll be, you know, as they're out covering the county, the first that should be responding is those right close to town, and if that's our local place, then we've got to figure that out. So, that's just my comment on that. I mean, we need to get to the right annexations. We need to get to the right, you know, budgets that, that, you know, we need to be looking at. And again, we've pled before for people to join committees, join budget, the group that looks at these things in depth, but I would almost venture to say that when we have budget hearings, it's almost too late. So get ahold of it early and often, and be reviewing it, and take notes, ask the questions, and then, you know, there have been great questions outside in polite way, and I appreciate that, because, you know, the information is there, and if there's a problem with the budget the way it is, then we need to look and fix it. But, you know, it, it doesn't grow by that much each year. It's, it's only by 0.3% under state law for, you know, the measures that were passed many, many years ago.
A lot of, a lot of calls in the South End, not a lot of them, a certain percentage are at the South Commons. Those were annexed. You know, it's not just, and then also my question, with your service fee, that is to pay for the town place forests, whatever. What about us that live outside of the city limits that have city waters? Are we going to be taxed to pay for living in-town people? You know, that's, that's a fairly positive question. The Lakeview Rural Fire Department goes outside of the town limits, not Lakeview City Fire Department. Lakeview City Police do cover out there. I've seen them. They're friends of mine. I will back up a law enforcement officer until I can read no more. But if we're paying the same fee as people that live inside those town limits, what are our benefits from that that live outside the town limits?
From my understanding of the, the fee for water, those are not annexed, and the town's $10 more on the bill. Anyone correct? Anyone to correct?
I don't even think we got that one.
No, no, not for the water ser-, or not, not this police, you know, public safety fee. I'm talking about the actual, right now, on books, you're paying $10 more for non-annexed properties on the water.
For water sewer.
Yeah, water sewer.
I don't think it's getting more.
It's not that much.
It's not even a town rate.
That was 10, I was told 10 long ago, but so it's not even-
I think that, that new district is a higher rate.
The new district might be around 10 then. So, yeah, I mean, ultimately, not paying a whole lot for a service that, you know, no taxes towards that service, just, you know, a smaller fee being outside of, which certainly doesn't cover any of the maintenance costs. I mean, when you talk about that fee, you know, you're talking about somebody sitting in collecting the bill, and-
Oh, I understand.
And the blind guys.
I lived in Clamath Falls for a long time. My sewer, sewer and water bill were a hundred bucks a month easy.
Sure.
Even in winter time. So it is low here.
It is, that's what the state says.
You know, it's, does that benefit a $10 fee if we pay it outside of the town limits? Does that benefit us as well as it does the city residents?
I can't tell you what the, the public service fee ordinance, draft ordinance has written, if it included those people or not. Does anyone can remember? It did not include, yeah, that's what I thought.
It did not include anyone outside of the town limits, is my recollection of reading it when it was first presented.
And that's what I remember hearing, but I never read myself.
Is annexation and town limits two different entities? Or are they one in the same term used?
If an area is annexed into a town, it becomes part of that town's boundaries, or it becomes the town's-
Okay, well, they are interchanged. My understanding, from what I read, is they've annexed all the way out to Cadmus Road into town, and onto, and Particel Burger Road is being annexed down town. That's my understanding, according to what I read. Can you clarify that, please?
Annex.
You can see kind of the corridor that goes south, the blue corridor there, they go south. That's the annexed area.
First time I looked at that map since the last meeting, that's, it says July of this year, so that's accurate right now.
And it goes as far as-
And it did not include South Night Colored Lands.
This is Cadmus.
That's Cadmus.
This is where, this is where Red Rock falls.
Right. But it, but we're annexing up to Cadmus Road.
No.
Well, then, then, what I read, that they were talking about annexing up to Cadmus Road.
If an annex, partials of lands within an area.
Everything that's in color on that map has been annexed.
Right, I understand. And, and the other part I was understanding was it goes out to Roberta Road. Some parts of Roberta Road are being annexed, am I correct?
The solar project that was up there was the only thing that was annexed.
And, and for what, for what purpose were they annexing the town? I just wanted to know, for what purpose were they annexing the town? Because I, I don't understand that annex, but there's no physical residential property out there.
And you want to know why they were not, or they-
Why were, why are they annexed? That's all I wanted to know.
That was the one with, that Orange is Six, the solar panel farm.
So we received some money and come from that because they're annexed?
Right. And then, that was part of, the Red Rock agreement is in order to get water sewer from the town. They have to be, anybody that's annexed has to get water sewer from the town.
Right, I understand. Okay, got it.
And so, that's what happened.
So we're in the process of annexing up to Cadmus Road?
Right.
Parts of, yeah.
Parts, excuse me.
Like I said, that, that blue corridor that comes down from the main body of the town of Lakeview, that is the town of Lakeview, and that allowed us to go ahead and take in Cadmus because it adjoins. You have to have some kind of contiguous lines within it, that kind of delivery.
So the only thing south of 9th Street is parts of M Street, the industrial properties on each side of M Street, not all of them, but many.
Right, yeah, okay.
And then, you know, east on Cadmus, south of Cadmus, Red Rock. That's the only parts south of 9th that have been annexed.
And those people have requested the annexation through that area, that they, that requested- And those people have requested the annexation through that area, that requested the annexation of the areas in parts.
So what we're doing is we're actually looking at, because of this annexation of certain areas, then that's going to provide income to the town as well.
Yes.
And when does that take an effect? Is that January next year? Is it January 2020? When do we?
For the ones we just annexed, the three properties that we've been talking about, the solar, the Red Rock and.
Yes.
Close to the man camp on Roberta.
It's a projection.
Red Rock's at least 15 years because of the.
Well, I understand about the Red Rock, they're out of the picture for 15 years. But I just want to know, between the properties, is that up to Cadmus Road, when is that expected revenue to start from the proposed annexations? Is that going to start in 2020, 2019, 2025?
It should start rolling in this year for, on some levels. Now, the full buildout will be later on some of that. You know, we annex those properties effective June 30th, so this year's tax bills, those properties will have town Lakeview taxes that they will be paying.
Thank you.
So you want to put a committee together and get more ideas on this? We can do it Monday and then go from there and get.
What? Once again, I think that a committee is not who needs to decide whether we move forward, but I mean, I think there is no one on our council that doesn't admit that we need enforcement monies.
Right.
So where are we going to get those enforcement monies? We robbed our budget to bring it back into line so that we could get it approved and done for this fiscal year that we just began. So, you know, we stole from certain categories in our budget to make sure that we would have applying items for police officers. And we wanted to continue to look at the safety fee. We ran into dead ends in regards to some people building. That's not the right way to go. Some people build and it is. But there are those that also build, that the levy or tax lien is the route to go because the public can vote on it. And so if the public doesn't vote on it, then I guess, you know, like I said, we'll have to face the consequences and come up with some other form of funding when that comes about at that given time. But I think, like I said, unless we're going to tax our community for a special election, if we're going to let a tax levy decide it and the public decide it, unless we want to toss in a lot of extra money for a special election, it's going to be two years off if we don't do it now. So my, my idea is we need law enforcement brought up to snub in our community. We at one point had that in our community, and I think we can get there again. And so that's what we're trying to do. And through coming up with enforcement monies, whether it be through a tax lien or if you want to just appoint a committee, I'm fine if that's what the council so desires to do. It's going to tie things up for a lot longer, but I say we need law enforcement monies. And I think the need was there when we jumbled our budget around to get it approved for this fiscal year. So, you know, we're already behind on things.
But like I said, we've got seven, eight dogs with this in it because in order to get it on the ballot, so we need to get on the right A and C piece.
If the council votes on that, then I guess that's what we need to do is move forward in that.
Do you have a list of the eight people that were interested in someone? So again, communities are just to set recommendations. I mean, obviously, that community's not going to make the call whether we send it out. We would have to make a resolution to then.
And in the timeframe, do you think a committee could work on it?
Yeah, they would only have one week. They would only have one week essentially.
That's what I'm saying, the time limitation for a committee is kind of unheard of to give that as a, here's your task.
And just to gather all the materials that they would want to have in front of them to make an educated decision is not, you know, work. What I say the committee doing is really gathering the information on really the 24-hour coverage, what communities of large scale and size on a per capita basis actually provide for their residents. You know, to me, that's some of what the committee can be helping do. And I think we've got a lot of people who are willing to volunteer their time to do that. At this time, I mean, you know, we've got a budget that will, that is for six through the calendar year. However, I find a lot of, you know, doubt in the fact that I think we'll actually get that, all six positions filled and kept filled for the whole time. Especially considering who we often have applied, then have to send them to academy. We won't get that service that we are looking for likely before this calendar year is up. And if we don't hire six, then there's that savings and then we have taken from this budget in the areas that we were proposing to take from. And then maybe next year's budget, we can say, okay, we're still paying for six because we never actually ever hired yet for six, so we're one more year lost into it. And maybe at that point, we're getting really close to the Red Rock, because we've seen it construct, we're seeing other potential revenues coming in, where we never actually have to adopt the fee, in my opinion. I'd rather not adopt the fee or tax in this situation.
May I offer a comment on your employment situation? I talk to a lot of young men that work in public safety around me all the time. The biggest problem, in my view, with the police department, and this is casting no stones at prior chiefs or anything else, is the instability that has existed there. I was a police officer for almost 28 years. Police officers don't work for just money. They work for pride of the agency, they work for pride in what they do. And like I said, the Lakeview Police Department has had a long history of proud service to this community. But I've been here almost 15 years now, and that has changed. There are young men that I will tell you, I had one tell me today, who has worked for the town in the past, I will not come to work for the town police department, but I will come to work for him tomorrow. The biggest problem with the town police department is not the existence of it or what you pay, it's been the instability there and people don't have any, not having any confidence in what they do. I have talked to multiple individuals that live in this community, that are invested in this community, that will come to work in law enforcement if the money is comparable to what they're paying, what they're receiving right now, which with your current budget, I wondered how you did, I didn't know exactly where you came up with the 21% increase for your police department budget, but clearly you've had to scrape and make other city departments suffer. But there, I'm telling you that if you can get good leadership in the department, Sheriff, I don't know if you know Sheriff Taylor's background, but he is a pretty darn accomplished individual. And he has really good skills. Their budgets, they're building forward for replacement of vehicles, equipment and things like that. They've got good stuff and people see that and people admire him because of that. And there are people in this community that will leave their jobs to come to work in a field law enforcement circumstance. It's not as abysmal as people think. It's been, the problem has been the leadership in the department. People didn't have faith in it. With the right leader there, they will have faith and they will come to work. I would state my retirement income, as small as it is on it, but there are people here that will come to work. They want to serve, but they want the right leadership, they want the right balls. Will was doing a good job, no doubt. All I heard about him was good things. But I will also say that I had a lot of admiration for Will and I wanted to work for him, but he was not invested here. And when you're not invested, when you're not invested here, when it's difficult, you go back to where you can do it easy. There are people that are invested in this community that are not going anywhere. They have the skills to do these jobs and I would just really, really encourage you to find those people, identify and work out those cooperative agreements and do it. There are people that will come to work for you. I talk to them every.
So I think you should set the committee, you ask for people to sign up, to be on the committee, I think you should honor that. Their volunteerism, you know, we don't want to put negative light on that, I'm not allowing the committee before. However, it'll be a recommendation that comes out of that, and maybe multiple recommendations. But they're under a timeframe, if they can figure out an answer to, or a recommendation to put on the ballot, I think we come to our next meeting and decide if we're going to put on the ballot or not and have legal counsel draft that.
It won't be time.
It won't be time for that.
That's what, we have to decide probably today or in another meeting, maybe, you know, have another meeting this week, I don't know. Something needs to be done to decide whether we want to let the public decide. That's, we've had to cry, we had to cry, we want law enforcement 24 hours a day. That, we heard that, and that was just in public comments, that the county's not providing that, the state's not providing that. So the town's trying to. And so therefore, if the public wants that, that's what we heard, the cry, then it's time for the public to vote on it. So I'll move right now that we put it on the ballot.
I did, your shot potentially. You know, it's a good turn, so if we get on there, because we also have that three six pack of marijuana, what's going on with that?
Yeah, it's just been worked on for a long time now.
Well, you know, I almost agree with Darwin after all this discussion. Can he speak first?
Sure, I'm just going to keep my hand raised, so.
That we need to work on the budget we have and possibly postpone this, even though it may be a long postponement. But I, you know, kind of am bouncing around, in my opinion, I guess, but I, we have it budgeted for this year. And then I just think we need to know where we go from there.
I would just say that I've already been through a family member calling the Lakeview Town Police in the last year and no response. It was a very threatening condition that I heard firsthand, believe me. And I just will say, I'm not going to have a clear conscience when something happens because we could have done something.
I'm not opposed to having a committee meeting and trying to speed things up and then if the council decides to put out a levy, that's fine. I will, I will support that, but.
What immediate need do you feel like this levy is going to give us tomorrow? Tomorrow if something happens, do you really think we're going to have an officer? We're having a hard time pulling in a fourth or fifth officer as it is. This money is just throwing money at it, but not actually using it in any useful way.
As you just heard him comment, Mr. Yates said that there are people.
Yeah, we have the positions open right now. We have, we have.
And they will come to work.
But you're wanting to add on top of that, we've got to establish what we have currently.
And the department crumbled before she arrived on the scene. I saw it happen before my eyes. Didn't like what was happening, didn't like the way it transpired, voiced my opinion in meetings. But I think she stepped in and tried to make a difference in our law enforcement in this community. And so therefore, that's what, you know, we're on that route to do that, to get those people, those personnels back into positions where they can assist these guys when they're out on their own, patrolling as long officers at night. It works all different ways.
I could have $100,000 to go buy 10 houses, but there's only four houses available in Lakeview. What good does it do me? That's my point.
All you can do is keep trying, concerted efforts to recruit. Are you going to give up, Sheriff, if you can't recruit anyone? No, you're going to keep trying. Would the state police give up? They don't have enough men right now, they're trying though. The point of town shouldn't give up.
You're trying to fill very quick. Funding issue, which is not a very quick funding issue. You're trying to add this.
No, we've already stole from our budget. It would be nice to put those funds back into the right departments that we had to take them from.
It's not stealing, it's money that you have. Stealing is implying that you're taking it that you didn't have.
Well, we had to take it from departments that could utilize it.
Yeah, it's very common practice in budgeting. But what you're trying to say is that we have to have this money now, we have to pass it now, when we really don't. We have an approved budget for five, six officers. We need to fill those positions. We need to look at the long term. What do we want to do for our community to make it so we get better retention?
And I have no problem with a committee. I'm just saying, my conscience is not going to set well when we set back right now on our jobs and do nothing.
But you're not going to do nothing if you actually set up a committee and look at the long term. You're asking us to give up money for something you actually have no plan for.
We have a plan for.
We would love to see it.
You should have been in our meetings. The ordinance is drawn up.
I've seen them all online. They're online.
They are?
Yes, thanks to Lake County Examiner. Yes, I've seen them, I've actually attended meetings as well. But, but the problem is, is you have open slots, vacancies currently that we are working on filling.
Well, I agree with that.
So throwing more money at it isn't going to fill those vacancies.
It, it won't fill the vacancy, but what our anticipation is, is that we will be able to retain officers. Now, we had an interview on Friday that looks like it's moving forward. You know, we've got things going that maybe I'm not transparent enough about, but it's stuff, it's personnel stuff, and when you go through a process, you have to go through a process, and that's what we're doing right now.
Understandable, but this is not an immediate need. This is not a knee jerk reaction, emergency fund that we must have in order to get that third, fourth, fifth officer. We have that funding already approved. So putting it on the table, and you've heard the outcry from the public and still even discussing it, is like saying the public's voice is not heard. I mean, you had a room full of people, if you'd had a bigger room, you would have had more people. The public has made it very clear, they're not supportive of this fee. The water issue and the public safety fee are two separate issues. Anybody who supports the water needing to be fixed does not mean they don't support LO. I mean, there's just no comparison, they're not related.
Nothing is an immediate fix, nothing that we're proposing is immediate fix. We understand that. But we are trying to make a plan for the long term also. So it's, you know, and that's where the levy may come into it if we decide to do that because, as you said, it would be some time before we get any funds from it. So I think we need to not only just say, well, we're okay for this year, but we do need to plan ahead.
And that's what I'm suggesting, not by adding a $10 fee today, tomorrow, next month or whatever.
The safety fee was.
We're talking about the levy, putting the levy and the time factor in it. So that's what we're discussing.
Well, I mean, you're, quite, and it must be realistic, your only option is for next year.
How is that?
Unless you can get it written up by August 8th, that is your only option.
That's what we were just talking about.
Yeah. Realistically, okay, so I'm saying realistically, I mean, I can tell you, I'm a great procrastiner and I can get a lot done in a very short period of time, but getting all these people together in eight days, nine days.
Kyle, you had your hand up.
Yes, so, I mean, it is extremely, I don't know, I mean, if I get a show of hands, have you guys put an ordinance or passed provision to get it on the ballot as this body, this, everybody right here, right now, it's a governing body here in the town council, voting the town manager, has you guys gotten together, put anything on the ballot before?
It takes time.
No, no, it doesn't take time. It's very, it's actually quite a, no, it really is. I mean, it's literally.
But Jerry said it might take a little while to get it put.
It's literally seven forms, three of which they get turned into the county clerk. You get that back in like no time, no time flat. The DA will sign off on it, make sure the constitutionality is fine, you get a letter back, boom. I mean, that's for my, you know, as a citizen, putting an ordinance up. So, I mean, you know, you guys just have to adopt something, get it put in, and you're good to go. The secretary of state gives you, you know, I mean, you're solid. It takes the days, literally days. It's very quick. It can be.
So we either need to have a committee or not have a committee. We also need to decide if we want to put it on the ballot or not, or wait to the committee voices, do they think, in a recommendation that we should put it on the ballot. But again, like you said, the timeframe we have, I mean, we don't, in a regular meeting, meeting until after that deadline on the 14th is when we meet again, unless we want to call a special meeting. I'm not going to be here all next week, I'll just tell you that right now, so, but, you know, I've already stated my opinion on this, so.
Well, I, I think that from what I was hearing the other night, put it on the ballot and let the people vote on it. You know, that was the voices I kept hearing is, let's put it on the ballot, forget about the $10 safety fee, that thing in the ballot is not going to happen. So in my opinion, let's put it on the ballot and let the people vote on it.
And clarification on it?
Just public safety fee.
You mean the property tax levy or?
It would be a property tax for law enforcement as well.
Property tax levy for law enforcement. That's where, that's where they get paid from anyways, property tax is correct.
For emergency services, depending on how we look at it, it would have to be drawn up.
But that's what I'm saying, I just want to try to figure out what it is because I hear you say it, you say it, and I know that they're not the same its.
Monies.
But if I want to know what property, property tax levy.
If it goes on the ballot, it will be a tax, I promise you. If it goes on that and the public votes, then it will be a. It's not gonna be something the council's deciding on.
Right, and with, well, with taxes, we have more benefits with utilizing it as a tax versus a fee, and I've already read all the precedents and stuff about it, different counties, different cities, different council members, and et cetera, et cetera. Put it on the ballot as a property tax levy, and then promote it with this, all, with all the positive attributes of why we need this, and possibly like pass it with seventy-five percent, if people are understanding that, this is why we need this. If you just throw it out there and then don't say another word about it, people are gonna say no. But you put it on the levy, say, hey, this is why we wanna do this, and have a town prior saying, hey, these are the good points about it, then, good possibility.
I agree with you.
Good possibility, goodwill has.
It needs a lot of answers.
Has without some, somebody saying, these are all the good points. Yeah, okay, if it's a bad one, yeah, property tax levy, okay, I get it. I own property, so that's why I'm trying to, I'm attending these, because I wanna learn more about what's going on, and be part of rather than a part from. Okay? That's my, that's my take on all this. So, put it on the ballot as a real tax, not as a fee, and you might get a little further, because I'll vote no on a fee, I might vote yes on a tax, so, if it's going to the appropriate earmark thing.
So, one of the other things that was brought up at the last meeting too, was that some were calling for, would there be an end date on this?
What?
An end date, so that if the tax were making in another force, force, would there be, I know, but that's what needs to be discussed on, if you're gonna put on the ballot, that, you know, is it a three, four-year tax? Yeah, is there sunset on it, so that, you know, by then we'd know if Red Rock's coming, we'd know if there's, you know, if the marijuana tax.
It's fair, that's fairy dust though.
I mean, no one's given us any projected numbers on what that three percent marijuana tax might be, and that alone might be able to cover this position. So, to me, if you, that's our priority, in my opinion, to get that on the ballot. You know, I'm primarily against taxes of, of a certain form, but, new taxing, I should say, but in this case, you know, that marijuana tax, if we had some real numbers on it, it might be the solution to this one position that we're lacking.
It might work, we don't know.
For the public need, which isn't really perceived well by the few complaints that we got, in my opinion, and certainly, although, you know, it was good to get some general information, it's hard to read between the lines what really people are feeling when they take a survey, when they get a whole lot of personal feeling tied behind it. I mean, we've got coverage through, you know, twenty-two hours a day is the latest number I've heard, in a town of this size, is pretty good. I was on the Burn City Council, and we never have twenty-four hour coverage, and most other small communities do not have twenty-four hour coverage. So, to me, there needs to still be a committee, whether you guys decide to vote, put it on the ballot, there's gonna be left to this council.
Yeah, I think with six officers, we're gonna fall short of having twenty-four hour surveillance, because there's just, there's so many other demands on an officer these days, that their time can't be spent out in surveillance and, and on the street.
Twelve of them, you're getting from six.
What's that?
Twelve is better than six and six.
Definitely. So, but I, I, I just think that it's gonna be hard to, for anybody to come up, the state police, county, us, to come up with twenty-four hours surveillance.
I grew up here, also, I grew up here, you grew up here, we had coverage. I, I, I understand some of that, I, we had, we had pretty, pretty good coverage, I grew up here.
Let's get on with this, and we've talked more.
Let's go with what we know. My, my last recommendation, let's go with what we know, let's not go with the fairy dust in the future. Let's go with what we know is concrete and real. You know, put that ballot on the measure as a tax, and promote it to the people. That is real. This Red Rock thing, to me, it's, it's, there's nothing here. Not till, not till it greases, you know, until you cross the breeze of my palm, will I start believing it. Same way with the marijuana taxes up, I ain't gonna believe it until it starts crossing my palm with green stuff. Same way, I mean, just the reality of what I'm looking at.
It's already happening in the town of Lakeview.
Yeah, I, I heard eight K for a year or something, some insignificant amount, but it's not, it's not much, it's just a little bit.
Sheriff?
Earmark.
Let, let us get on with this, because we've got much more stuff to move over to. So, council, um, your recommendation is to go ahead and put it on the ballot or not?
I think you need a motion, if that's what you're gonna ask for. I mean, I, I think there needs to be a committee, regardless if it goes on the ballot, and if this.
No, I agree with the committee.
Yeah, the committee needs to be formed.
Okay.
Asked last meeting for.
I, I, I did make a, a motion a while ago, but it died. It's been talked about. I moved that we move forward to the tax levy.
I'll second.
Hold on a favor?
Aye.
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 I said tax levy. Okay.
I think now it's up to the, the, the public to decide on it. We have a need, I think the public was here, they voiced the opinion, they agree that we need law enforcement on a more secure basis, round the clock if possible, and so by letting the public vote on it, it'll be proven by the public whether there is a true need and whether they desire it.
So, you've had motion that's approved to put it on the law. I still think we need a committee, and I think we need to formalize that committee, so I make a motion to appoint a public service committee, a public safety committee, however we wanna work that, that would, would look at, you know, all the issues that we've been discussing in the recent meetings, and, and where the true need is.
I would second that.
Okay, hold on a second, a favor?
Aye. Did you vote on?
Okay.
Yeah, we did. It's three to one. Three to one.
Okay, so we need to, um, we need to start that committee, and I would like to start Monday.
Are you gonna be back?
So, you, as to, what's that?
Are you gonna be back Monday?
Yeah, I'll be back Sunday. I would like to get rolling on this and get, get their comment or feedback.
So, we've approved a committee.
I know you already had some, but.
The parameters of that committee, you can help figure out as mayor, and I think, you know, you guys report to us and just tell us what you come up with.
And I, I will say that I, I, I see a need, maybe even, well, I don't know if there's a possibility, because it would be not normal, but, you know, my, my motion was to put it on the ballot.
Right.
But what is it? I mean, we really need to define it.
Well, that's what we need to find and figure out.
And you know, the, the safety fee, we discussed was for in the neighborhood of a hundred and so on thousand, is what we're looking to generate from that. So, we need to have a meeting as a council and set an amount, and visit with our attorney, I would say, to see if it's feasible, I, you know, I, I might, just because I made the motion, that I think it's gonna happen.
So, you guys previously approved ten dollars in the, as that fee base. It was discussed on different prices, and you guys voted in June to, and I say you guys, because I was, I voted against, because I was against that too, but the ten dollar is set in a previous motion, now that was tied to a public service fee.
That was a fee, that was a fee.
That was, yeah, that was set to a public service fee, but if you're gonna do a ten dollar per.
We voted to.
Tax account.
Well, we, we didn't have, we didn't vote on it, ordinance, no choice.
No, we never did, we just.
You voted on the ordinance, but you voted that the ordinance would be ten dollars.
Well, they, but they, we aren't, have to vote on the ordinance, so.
I understand that, but if you're gonna put something on the ballot and have the writing, it's gotta have a fee set, and so you need to decide now what that fee is.
There, there will be a percentage, it won't be a fee.
No, it won't be a fee.
It'll be a property tax base, so, it will be decided on property taxes within the town of Lakeview.
And that's what we need.
Man, dude, that's gonna be interesting.
Can I ask a question?
You can run the numbers on that, that's doable, but.
I'm not trying to start a motion, but when you guys did your motion to approve that, to, does it stay levy or is it a tax?
It's a tax levy.
It's a tax levy.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that.
But on a percent basis, and so that percent basis needs to be derived, derived from trying to get to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand, so then you need to take with the assessor's office all the tax base in that. It's, call it eight million, and then divide that by whatever percentage you need to get per ten, per thousand dollars, and add, and add that to the, to the bill, to get to the total number you're looking for. And I can probably punch some numbers, but algebra's real good, but I would say, you might want to amend your motion that says not to exceed, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand or something, with potential tax increase at a, it's probably gonna be something like point zero zero, zero one, or something like that on a, on a tax levy, basically. Yeah, so, that's something you're gonna need to give to the assessor's office real quick, and have them punch some numbers on, on what that is, but, you know.
I guess to keep us, to keep us from having to have another meeting.
Yeah, you'd have to have another meeting too.
I, I will amend my, or I'll just make another motion and negate that, but I guess, I move that we have our attorney draw up, if possible, a tax levy to be in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand for safety services, public safety in our community.
For how long a period of time?
I think it should be for. A four-year.
I understand, I understand the change because of Red Rock, but.
No, that's not gonna.
Not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I think you want a four-year.
That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, motion made, we second it. Live for a four-year period. Hold on a favor?
Aye.
I'll go with that, but two years wouldn't be enough, then we'll just go ahead. Try for four years.
One oppose.
Oh, one oppose? Okay, well, one oppose doesn't.
No, it's fine, you don't need to.
No, but it should be integrated.
Yep.
So, I don't know how long it'll take them to do that, but getting back to this committee, do we wanna have a board committee before or after? We hear back from the attorney.
No, I think we need to go ahead and move forward to the committee, I think that's a different issue.
Is everybody available for Monday night? And hopefully it won't take fifteen hours, six o'clock?
I don't know, is it, is it, it's not for the council, is it, it's just a committee being formed?
Yeah, you won't want to fold, you won't, won't. We can two at that meetup.
Right, and we need to get ahold of them and make sure they're available, so, why don't we plan on Monday night, and then we can all talk to them and see if they're still interested in doing this, and if they can be available on.
Yeah, we have the details of that. Either of you wanting to be on that period?
I don't know.
No, I mean, as a council, I'll be on two. Mayor, somebody do wanna be there? I would appreciate being there, but I can't be on Monday, so.
I'll be there.
So, be there.
Oh, you don't want?
No, that's, these two would be fine, that's, that.
We can have three here.
No, I won't be there Monday, but I'm just moving forward, I'd like to.
But we're having a committee meeting, a council.
No, I understand, I'm sure they understand what I'm saying. I wanna be on the committee, I just won't be there.
No, that's fine. He wants to be on the committee.
He wants to be on the committee, I can, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's any vote.
They should be on the committee.
So, you get, you get there, set it up, and then I'll replace you when.
Okay.
You should be leaving in a while.
All right.
Few meetings.
Let's move on, let's move on down, let's get this discussed, um, discussion on the water system improvements.
Mark and Dr. Rur on site, this is their second week. We had a few complaints from some local businesses, they had them blocked off for a full day of business, they still had foot traffic, they were, used their parking lot a little bit, but it was pretty inconvenient. We've moved past that now, so hopefully their disturbance will be minimal, but a lot of people on the ground, a lot of, a lot of work is getting done. Major disturbance, but big project.
Okay. Along those lines, where are we at with the water master plan?
Actually, we, we didn't meet with Darrell Anderson this morning, because he's trying to finish it up, because he's been active, so.
That's enough, that's all I want to hear.
He's requested a work session early in August.
I did hear that today during the regional sessions, the, that he was talking about, but he mentioned that it's gonna be done by then, but he mentioned that there was a work session he'd like to have in August.
Right. Well, let's have it right away in August.
Right away in August.
Yeah, I mean, or, you know.
The fourteenth.
Before a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Or three o'clock.
Which is not till the fourteenth.
Right. So, you want to have it earlier than that, or the fourteenth? Fine, at three o'clock.
I don't know if they'll be ready before that, but I think the fourteenth, three o'clock for that water.
And then we were going to also talk about, like the mayor mentioned, he, I met with Larry Holesgate from Business Oregon, and then the mayor came in too, and we are going to have, we have to get the numbers together for our water treatment or filtration system, and they're gonna help us with it, have a one-stop meeting, I don't know if you might have been involved in those or not, but we'll have different funding agencies at that meeting to talk about, whether it's USDA, or Business Oregon, or Oregon Health Authority, there's several different businesses that will be there to help us find our right path to go so we can get a filtration system, improve our lines more than we are just this summer, so, that will be good, so we thought we'll all leave on that. Good. Can I ask if this north second line will feed into the annexation that's currently going on, or happened, I should say, into Red Rock? Does that go down the industrial at all? No? No. No, we received spatial funding for that. Is that the two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars? So, we were awarded that. Yeah. I thought, was that a north well arsenic issue as well, though? Oh, that's a different one, I'm sorry. We, uh, actually, the law, we've been awarded this two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand through the Spatial Public Works Fund, through Business Oregon, for doing water and sewer extensions down to Red Rock.
No more discussion on that?
Oh, the second.
Enter. Yes.
One more small item. Darrell came up with a, what he considers could be a pretty good solution, where we can put well nine, that we've had drilled for the past almost ten years. That's a self-flushing sand filter that's above ground, so we gave him the okay today to, to order that. It's gonna be about a, probably total outlay of about fifteen thousand dollars. The apparatus itself is about twelve thousand, so we gave him the go-ahead to go ahead and order that, and we've spent so much money on it, and it helped our situation, we started using some water out of that, so one of the lower, one of the lowest in iron and manganese that we have, so we keep this in, have that, get that on line, and that'd be a big help.
Is Darrell Anderson on retainer for the town of Lakeview?
Yes.
So, he does the town of Lakeview's work as far as engineering goes? Does he, he does work with other contractors as far as engineering goes?
Yeah.
Isn't there a conflict of interest going on there? That's kind of interesting. And he's on retainer? An engineer on retainer? I've never heard that before. Okay, thank you.
And I think the reason that it has been allowed is because he's the only engineer in town.
There have been many times that we have called for bids, and asked for contractors to step forward, and we were in the outback.
Just seems like a double-dipping type of thing to me.
Okay, let's go on to new business. The council proposal.
Okay, and I'll put that in your packet. It's, uh, for dispatch center, it's to upgrade, replace the analog recording system, and it is a recording system, but ours is at least twenty or twenty-five years old, and according to Scott, it's. twenty or twenty-five years old, and according to Scott, it's really on its last leg, and if that goes down, everything goes down, so it's something we need to get ordered and get it here and put in.
This is within the budget, so is this, is this just for our information or is this actually a vote?
I don't think you have to vote on it, because I put it in.
It's just for information. Okay, that's already under budget.
If there's much needed, I'll agree with that. And I, I just would like to make a comment, and I, it's probably out of place, but I heard various comments tonight in regards to Red Rock, and when an organization such as Red Rock has gone to the extreme that they've gone to and actually are already paying for the equipment that is going to be set up here, you know, the warm-up millions and millions already paid up, I think that the fairy dust or whatever, I keep hearing rumor each to go away, I, I think we need to all get behind Red Rock and show them we're pleased that they're here in our community, and I don't think it's fairy dust, I think it's something we can be very proud that our community has.
And they're willing to offer jobs to people in our communities, and that is something we lack here immensely, and people don't understand that.
Well, I, I don't know where the rumor got started or why, and, you know, I think they do fall through, I realize that, that there can be a downfall in anything.
I think it's the history that we've had a few fall through.
There have been, and I've worked on some of those too.
Whatever that could be.
So, LLC Walton, next, I want to.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good, so, I, I agree with you, so, um, their wine are summary of four top items that we want to see moving forward. So, I kind of went through and highlighted and read through most of these, you know, depth that they provide for us. I highlight only seven. So, you know, I think from those seven, I'd be willing to, it doesn't really have a discussion, where others are in grades. I have letter A, B, E, I.
Well, wait a minute.
L, Q, and.
Let's, let's take the money. Well, number A is on one tax, and I would assume we all agree on that.
You do. But most, there's many on here that are taxes, but this one specifically is talking about trying to keep the monies there, they've been previously there to provide the service to.
So, Darrell, when you stated A.
A, B, E, I, L, Q, and double C, well, the top seven I can see from this list.
Okay. E, again. And I did deer, D, which is beer and cider tax. I don't buy that much of it, but it would bring some money in, into our coffers.
Oh, my gosh, you are hilarious, Sandy.
Well, that's a funny answer, in fact. We're talking about needing money in our budget, so here we go.
The beer part will get them.
Yeah.
As long as it's capitalized.
Cases of beer going out of Safeway every time I go in there, so, anyway, that's my.
That's our time there.
So, what else does anybody have? Okay, um, and you did the annexation flexibility, yeah, I, I agree with that one.
There's a whole lot of, obviously, personal background that's in the planner.
And did you, I also did infrastructure financing and resilience, which is I.
Which is I.
Okay. I did, um, I questioned K, local patrol, just being on city streets, but that's not the most important. R, top detector.
To me, that just seems so above what we're on, what level we're going to be able to help solve, so I can lock that one up. Just like PERS or something else, I mean, it's, those are ongoing ones that will.
All of these will be something probably discussed in the legislature, doesn't mean that, these are just monthly of Oregon cities will, will push for, and towns, cities also will be adding incentives to this, and so, the woodsmoke reduction program CC is the other one, but I, we only can have three, so my vote would go to A, B, and C, C.
Thank you.
And I don't know what other people are wanting.
It's only four, right?
I don't know what you.
Well, we can only do.
Isn't it four that they're asking for from each community?
So, to me, Q was.
Yeah, top four, I would still go for them, I would also go for the D, beer and cider tax.
So, to me, Q was kind of, hit home to us, is the place-based water resource planning program school and that, so, to me, anything that's the word water was something that I thought we could probably try and get on. More than taxes that are already in place, already provided, already established, I don't see that doubling or tripling in our, our tax base for marijuana, for cigarette, liquor tax, they're not all that much, you're not going to change that much of the pain compared to a water problem, the consequences effect, so, to me, I, I feel I think there's going to be a Q.
Can I make a suggestion? What about the safe routes to school mash? I have a question on that. Does that?
What, what barrier is a U?
Sorry, U. Because if you go down by our schools, it is a race track, like every time you go down to drop kids off. So, I was just curious if barriers, I don't know how this works, I guess I'm just trying to ask information as well. Is that?
Well, and also, cities must provide a forty percent match unless the school is located in a city that has population of what, five thousand, so I guess that would.
To me, this goes back to, is our TSP saying our transportation system, is it saying those are unsafe areas, always low risk at, and near schools? I personally think that our school staff does a good job out there.
I'm not saying.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, but it is a jumble test.
But at seven thirty in the morning, you can go to school or between, because especially down by the high school or, you know, by, especially little kids' school too, just work time down.
It would just probably help, you know, if we really think, have officers on duty,
Well, even parents that don't work, they could go volunteer, I mean, there's enough of them.
We need to continue to keep our kids safe, this, to me, this one does really help us a whole lot to deal with the match funding that we want to change, I mean, this would be like major changes, like possibly foot traffic overbridge or.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a little excessive.
There's a whole lot of different things that, we're not going to spend any time on any of that.
No, I get it.
We've taken the steps, and some of that's been to close off the streets during the day, which obviously comes with some reserve for the property owners that live on the streets.
Parents just need to stay off their cell phone when they're bringing their children's school. Let's go in on the price, the thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mike, did you have any thoughts on? Want to be kind of, somewhere, we're getting down.
I, I.
I'm, I'm, A, B, C, C, D, A, B, D, C, C, is what I, I have, but I'm open.
Need to narrow my list down, because I can, I can scratch you, I think I was in a regional solution, I was talking about infrastructure, so that might have been why I partly highlighted, because it was one of the topics they were trying to get funding to.
I circled that, but I had kind of given more for, because of the ones I was working on.
I'm still, I'm still stuck on Q, I mean, if I would replace the Q, I think I'd be more than happy to go with A, A, B, C, C, and.
So, what is Q?
The water-based, the water resource planning. Again, this doesn't mean a whole lot, but we're one of the two hundred and thirty-two communities.
Okay. I could be, but anything else?
No, I think you'll, you know.
So, the, the question is, we want Q or D?
Q.
The beer money or the water resources?
We're going to have to get the story here, we keep by looking.
At least some humor.
So, we've got A, B, and C, C.
Yeah, A, B, and C, C.
Mike, you guys have a, or Karen, about your, I just, I really think we should have the water one. I mean, a lot of communities are, you know, a lot of people are thinking this is just a Lakeview issue, water quality is a nationwide issue, it's a world issue, I mean, providing the service is a huge issue for people, and when you go with infrastructure that has never been, it's not like we put a reserve for infrastructure to, you know, in a fifty-year plan to replace all the pipes and every year, you know, we've got some of that now in place, but all that existed back in the days, like, oh, if it wasn't there, it would be fine, but revenue has not stayed there. Needs to be looked at, and I think we should support it on the revenue slate as well. Through LLC. Okay. David, mine.
Oh, no.
Is it different? There's not great consensus on that one. So, go, go around. Yeah, one on one to nine of them. Come on there, I believe one at AA. With the wastewater technical assistance program.
Which one? AA.
Yeah, I wouldn't usually have moved up above C, C, but C, C was middle.
We put our waste letter in there every week. For hobby stuff.
Could be, we could be doing what Anaheim's doing, run it through a filter system and give it to you for drinking water. I agree, Q. I agree, Q. If I'm done, I want to be down there. Odd to say, just got back from vacation.
I was going to say, I'm too about it too, because I just got back from vacation, and we were, the water was something.
Not good, right?
No, actually, the water was too soft in one area, and you literally cannot get the conditioner out of your hair, I had to use bottled water to get it out, then we went to a restaurant on the other side of town, and you could taste the chlorine in the water, it was absolutely, it was not good.
Okay, do we have anything else? Did you, are you going to see Q? Go with quick. Q.
Q or D? Did you, you were.
Go back and look at it.
I don't think Q would really.
That's what you had, right?
We don't have a major.
Is that what I had? Okay.
That's what I was wanting to be, is that's. That's. Ours is more of an aquifer type situation where ours bring that offering.
Yeah, Q really isn't going to, that'd be very nice. No, I had, I had, I had A, J, Z, and double A. Tobacco tax, I don't smoke, you know what?
I think we're going to get more from the deer, because not, people are not smoking as much.
Our cigarette tax is twenty-eight hundred dollars per year, I mean, that's.
That's not going to help us.
We need to spend our efforts, or the legislature's, I could.
Of course you know that.
No. Water, whether it's, doesn't affect us, someday, some, I mean, water, we need every community to stay on top of water, and not just ours.
Well, we'll have to do this again in two years.
But those cigarette taxes, liquor taxes, they could double it, but it still would affect our budget.
No beer tax, okay?
No, I don't, no, it's still there. Taxed enough.
It's not personal, it's for the town coffers.
Otherwise, you're telling all of you, drink one beer, you'll get that, one taxes. So, are we to council updates? We didn't, it wasn't on our agenda, but I do have something to say to that, in fact. County on the twenty-second, which is a Wednesday of August, will be at the pool park for just an employee appreciation thing from four to six thirty, followed by the swim team one at six thirty.
Yeah, she, she said the town park came off.
No, 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 it's at the pool, it's at the pool. I was wondering why the confusion was there, but that's, I just wanted to.
That's where the confusion came from.
We don't need any vote or anything on that, we're just letting you know we're going to be up there.
And I did go to a lip sync meeting of the county house, which is like a public safety committee, and they had a very nice ceremony for public safety week with probation officers and jailers, and lunch and little introductions of people, it was really very nice meeting. People worked very hard at both jobs.
Good success to this. Okay, we have anything else to discuss?
I just, I wanted to make a comment that Peter River from the DEQ is, is trying to find out if we're going to have to join meetings, and so if we can let him know as soon as we can find out.
I was heard from her last day about the fourteen, then I did hear Dr. Rachel Saccabia, and she can't do the fourteen.
Can't?
No, but she said if we want, we can still move forward with it, but she would like to attend, but she would not be able to on the fourteen.
Well, they suggested the seven, but I.
It's a joint meeting with the county.
Right, or air quality council.
So, I would suggest their meeting on the first and fifteenth, well, the thirty-first, first, and the fourteenth and fifteenth, so, she wasn't available on the fourteenth?
She's out of town.
So.
She has other.
So, she's probably not available on the fifteenth, but you know, and that's only a few times in order, it's normally scheduled, so we might want to just invite them to our meeting on twenty-fourth, no, we don't, you know, get to twenty-eighth, is that too late?
August, yeah, that's too late.
So, you just have to have a special meeting if you can do.
Well, this me, this meeting is for the county and the town to discuss our ordinances, because our ordinances are too different, and the ordinance for the county states something different when it's not fair for the town people to have to abide by the rules of the air quality program when the county does not. It needs to come as one, and we need to have similarities, and that's why we're trying to hold this meeting, is to have both entities here, so we can come to an agreement, because it makes my job and everybody that does air quality in the committee's job hard when we're trying to make everybody abide by the burning rules through DEQ.
So, I want to a hundred percent support you and your efforts as, as air quality goal. Has the committee decided to look at the two ordinances side by side?
Yes, we did.
We did, oh, just missed.
We were gone.
Okay, so you've done that, and you, you look, is there a recommendation for what changes?
Basically, the county does have no follow-through, it's where the town has letters that we send out, if they don't abide by it, it will be a fine, but DEQ's the one that goes in and fines, and we don't want to be in the team, because if we do, DEQ's going to come in, and that's the last thing I want.
So, you had a couple of county people there, were they, were they hearing from the commissioners?
The rec, the recommendation came from, from the committee that was working on that, and then a couple of people that.
It was a good meeting, I'm sorry.
The, the need is to have the two entities meet, and that's what we're trying to arrange. As far as the timeline, I, I think the main thrust of it is to get it done before the next with burning season, so that those were the ordinances that did fall in place with each other, so.
Because sometimes we do take time to adopt.
Would, would the latter meeting, or was it the twenty-eighth, is that what we meet?
Yeah, twenty-eighth is when we meet, and fourteenth and twenty.
I mean, ain't the county commissioners meet on the twenty-first?
No, they meet on fourteenth and fifteenth, because they're always the first and third Wednesdays, so they're.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
And I'm working with Rachel on the PAM two-point-five, um, book, our book, that we get every.
Just update.
The update, the update version, we can have a special.
So, I think we're just going to have to have a special meeting, and just working with, not only to get that scheduled with the commissioners, I'm willing, other than the first week, I'll say the first, two, third, I won't be there.
On the seventh, you were gone.
I'll be here, I'll be here the rest of the night.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll go ahead, you're, you're in the meeting at five thirty.